Welcome, everybody. And these information sessions will start to focus more and more on the hospital portion and all of the events that have to take place as opposed to the building. Because right now, I think we're 93% complete on the construction side. So, yeah, there's really not more to talk about in terms of what's going on in terms of construction. But it really is now about equipment and about people and about service as we go forward. So I'm going to share this presentation today with Angela Cox, Director of Operational Readiness, and Jeff Wilson at the back, who's the Director of Information and Communication Technology. And they're both certainly core and very valued members of my team. We'll go through some recent highlights, construction update, we're going to talk about the move date. We'll talk about some of the reviews that we're doing right now, hospital commissioning, equipment training orientation, and then about how we're going to get people to access. So in terms of recent highlights, we are, believe it or not, we are increasing access to the facility, to staff, even now while it's under construction and technically under the ownership of PCL. So we are bringing parties through, departments through, on Wednesdays, and I think two tours on Fridays. And we're still limited to the number of people that we can bring through at any given time, so it's usually limited to about a dozen people at a time. And that'll increase, like we said, after we get ownership of the facility. But for now, that's what we've got. And we're also doing some Saturday tours, particularly targeted to donors and to give access to the foundations to bring people through and to acknowledge the incredible generosity of our community. We surpassed our $40 million goal in fundraising, which when we began this, you know, talking about it even six, seven years ago, I think people were shaking their heads and saying, "Oh, that's just, that's too big for an area like this." And then we had a massive market meltdown, but this community really came through and we're there. So we're also doing the 2P events, and Rachel and her whole team are here. Completion of furniture selection and the equipment packages has happened, and that has been an absolutely enormous undertaking. We've got, it is actually going to be all new furniture coming into the facility. And we're starting to hear people talk about, you know, that leather couch that we bought that we'd like to bring forward. And we really talked about this a lot, and we spoke to a lot of hospitals that have gone through this already, in terms of their experience and their advice in moving forward. And they absolutely across the board said, "No, do not do a mix of old and of new. If you have the capacity, you really have to start fresh in a new facility." Particularly because the spaces, things like office spaces, et cetera, are actually smaller. We're not moving into, right now, we have our offices in old refurbished inpatient units. So we have offices and en suite bathrooms, and that's not the case in the new. They're tighter, and they will have to be very ergonomic, and they're going to have to have very specific equipment to be functional and make the best use of space possible. There's about 25,000 pieces of equipment that we've procured in various packages over the last year. And again, a huge thank you to staff who participated in that. We don't select furniture without the clinical users right beside us to write the specifications, to do the evaluations, to review all of the function, and to make that final decision going forward. And that's been a huge undertaking for them. Creation of training and orientation maps. So Rita Strickland is here again from my team, and Rita is leading on that whole orientation and training. And we're going to be using a lot of new technology in terms of the internet and three-dimensional modeling for people to be able to sort of, you know, walk their department. We've taken the maps of the new facility, and that'll allow people from their home or from anywhere they can access the internet to come in and take a look at their space and maneuver through it, and look at equipment placement and all the various flow processes that they may need. So you'll hear more about that at a future event. We'll be doing learning fairs. We're going to be bringing equipment in for people to take a look at what we've selected and touch it and feel it and see what's going on before they see it in the new facility. We talked about the achievement of the $40 million campaign. The Cancer Center has implemented a new software system, Mosaic. Jeff is probably more in tune to speak to it than I am, but it was a huge undertaking for them to make that kind of a change in software. And they're still working through it. And again, kudos to the staff who dedicate like just so many hours to making that happen in addition to everything else that they're doing. We've got Johnson Controls here. They're actually at the existing, at the current sites. They've taken over the maintenance component, and that has freed up people like George Heron, who's at the back there, to focus his attention on everything that has to happen, preparing to decommission this building and make sure that we're able to move out. As I'm sure you're aware, both the Ontario Street site and the St. Catherine's General have been sold. And so we will be moving out, and there's a whole process that George is leading as we go forward with that. So the Minister of Health visited our new health complex and was very complimentary. I think that she recognizes that the time has come for these sorts of buildings to be put to rest. And again, was very complimentary, not only of the building, but she's heard a lot in terms of the partnerships and the spirit of cooperation and collaboration that's gone into building this new facility. And so I think that's equally important. We are, in fact, the first building occupants. The project management team are no longer living in a trailer. We said goodbye to our trailers. They went off to Humber Hospital, I believe. And it was a little emotional, I'm not going to lie about it. We were in there for about three and a half years, I guess, almost four years. So we are now in the Cancer Center up at the front of the building. So if you get invited and you're coming in for meetings to attend with us, you're actually going to be meeting in the new health complex. And we will talk about the move date, which was announced a week or so ago, and it is March the 24th, 2013. So again, 136 days until the end of construction. We are still on budget and we're on schedule for that date. We're probably, like I said, a little more than 91% complete at this point. There's still a lot of workers there on the site, and they're still being drawn from our community, which is really exciting. And we see something different every time we come in. The last thing we saw, though, was Lisa and I were leaving. The facility is around 7 o'clock one night, and we turned around to take a look, and all of a sudden we realized that they had put up the emergency signage. So the E-M-E, and in bright red letters, at which point we quickly pulled our phones out and said, "Oh my, please cover that up unless you want somebody to show up here clutching their chest." So, and I don't think your first aid kit is going to quite cut it. So they quickly ran out and covered them with garbage bags, and so you can no longer see the letters. So as we move forward, we are doing deficiency reviews. And again, we're bringing staff in who participated in the development of the output specifications because we get to go through, and with our compliance architects, we look at all of these spaces and say, "Have they achieved what we've asked them to?" So we're looking at very specific things. It's a little bit dry, actually, because what we're doing is going in and you're counting the number of outlets. You're looking at the placement of data. You're looking at the millwork. You're looking at the finishes in the ceilings. You're checking to make sure that the lights are appropriate. So it's all that base building detail. We'll do another round of that after equipment comes in, and that'll be more clinical function-focused. And we'll have staff come through and test sort of the location of things and how we've done the fit out before we move in. So we continue to do those. Those should be completed by the end of October. And at that same time, we'll start bringing staff through to do the equipment commissioning reviews as well. So now I'm going to pass it over to Jeff, who's going to tell you a little bit about some of the building technology going in.
Okay, everyone. For those who don't know me, I'm Jeff Wilson, the Regional Manager ICT Technical Support. And I've been part of the project management team for about the last three years. It's been my life. It's exciting stuff. We really are, and I hate to use the word state-of-the-art facility, but we really are getting a state-of-the-art facility. The biggest thing is the interwireless antenna system, which is an in-building wireless system that carries all wireless technologies, which is cell phones, pagers, your traditional laptops, iPhones, iPads, you name it. It's 100% coverage throughout the facility. We will be the first healthcare facility in Canada to have this, which is a huge, huge thing for healthcare. Because as we move towards a more electronic medical record and as we become more mobile, I mean, I think that, you know, you can't even buy a regular cellphone anymore. They're all smartphones, smart devices, wireless. It really, it lays the foundation with respect to moving forward and towards the electronic medical record. Integrated bedside terminal, which again is another one that we're working towards, just getting kind of a closure on that RFP. It really goes away from the television that's in the patient room and brings in a computer terminal. And the terminal can be used for just about anything, from patient education, patient entertainment, electronic documentation at the bedside, communication with loved ones. They've got webcams. It's really a computer on an arm. So it takes kind of that television, which is rapidly disappearing. If you have teenagers, you'll know they hardly watch television anymore. It's all online. It's all on-demand. So that really is preparing us for that kind of next step in the technology revolution. A full-fledged nurse call system, so it's all throughout the entire facility. It's the GE Intelligence Nurse Call, which runs on the hospital's network. Again, fully functioning. There's a lot of functionality from day one opening, but once we get in the building, we're looking at integration and possibility, taking that further so that nurse call can actually communicate with portable phone devices and so on and so forth. So trying to bridge the gap between the patient and the nurse. LPASS Real-Time Location System. It's actually a lot of different technologies. It allows in the Women's and Babies Program for you to put a sensor or a band on a baby and a mother and ensures that they are paired and together, keeps them safe. If somebody tries to walk out of the department with a baby, then you get alarms and, you know, police and the whole shoot and match. It's a good system. Similarly, in the Mental Health Program, there's, you know, if a patient wandering, if there's a concern, they just basically put a badge on, and if they leave the area, there's certainly notification. The other half of that is the staff safety, which is a growing concern certainly throughout the organization, is they have a wireless, what's called a Wireless Code White or a Staff Duress Button. And if you push the, in the Mental Health ED is the opening day areas that will be covered with this technology. But if you push the button, the system will notify security, will tell security where you are, what room you're in, and all automatically simply by pushing the button. DI is another area we're looking at putting that into play. So it's exciting stuff. Digital Wayfinding. That is a 40-inch display that is at the main entrance of the hospital facility, which is touchpad or touchscreen, so you can get directions on how to get into this, you know, from one place to another in this hospital. For those who have been there, it is huge. And I have looked at the drawings for three years, and I am struggling to find my way around because it is that big. The nice thing is that that actually is equipped to be scanned by smartphone, and that is actually what it looks like. So you can scan it right into your smartphone, right off of the display, take the directions, and it will put the directions in. It'll, you know, if you want, if somebody who likes a piece of paper, there's an ability to print to a printer that's sitting at the volunteers' workstation. So, you know, again, it's whether you like technology or prefer paper, we have the ability to deliver both. Audiovisual enhancements. These projectors will be a thing of the past. We have probably nearly 50 rooms that are equipped throughout the facility. Around, I believe, the number is 14 to 16, a fully, full-fledged video conferencing units. We've got an auditorium that's fully equipped that can be split into two teaching units. The McMaster program has a number of rooms, large teaching rooms, that are full video conferencing capabilities. So certainly that you won't need to be running around looking for a projector or like this one here, it's a pieces are missing and you're trying to, you know, prop them up. So all good stuff. HP, who won the RFP for the networking infrastructure. So it is a brand-new, state-of-the-art network, which that's what you're looking at, the black cabinets. Not really exciting for many people, but for techies, it's a thrill. We've got about 3 million feet, or 3 million feet of tabling throughout the infrastructure and 15,000 ports, so everything is plugged into the network. It is one network. So you've got building automation, you've got security. There are, I think, are upwards of 1,000 card readers throughout the facility that allow you to go in through your badge, which I think is why they're pushing you to get your badges and make sure you've got the right type. So when you get in, you'll be able to go through the facility. But yeah, 15,000 network ports. We've got a master clock system, a wireless master clock system, so all the timekeeping throughout the facility is synchronized, you know, within hundredths of a second. So it's lots of exciting stuff. I mean, you know, I can talk briefly on the information systems. Many of the systems, it will be maintained in the new facility. So Meditech, OR Manager, anything that you're familiar with will just be maintained into the, into the new St. Catherine's Hospital. We've got a brand-new OR integration package, which is huge if you're in that program. I mean, we can route video signals and see in and out of the ORs, talk to staff. If you want to do teaching, you're able to take that video information and either send it into a, there's a conference room within the OR program itself, or it could be sent to another hospital for teaching. So certainly lots of opportunity for, you know, learning and technology. It's a dream for a techie, that's for sure. And it's exciting.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Angela Cox. I'm the Director for Operational Readiness. So my role is to work with all of the operational readiness managers, who we've got four of them sitting here today, as well as all the program managers, program directors, and the staff to get everyone ready to move into the new building. So that on day one, when we're in the building, we're able to provide safe and effective patient care. Because like Gloria said earlier, really is about the, we're sort of done with the building piece in many respects. We're moving on to the people and how do we make this actually a hospital now that we're 91 to 93% complete? Part of the process now is hospital commissioning. So what is ongoing right now is we're bringing groups of people in to ensure that the building is ready and that the equipment and systems are functioning properly. So this is more about the base building equipment. So this picture here is actually depicting one of our pneumatic tube portals, thank you, which are now located throughout the building. And we have to make sure that that will be functioning properly. So we'll be testing that. We'll be testing the nurse call system. There are IT people in the building now, in addition to Jeff being there all the time. But there are additional IT people there supporting to make sure that nurse call is functioning at every desk and in every room, that there's a functional capability within that system. So we will also get to the point where we're doing more of equipment testing, but right now it's the base building commissioning. And we have that scheduled and it's set, and we'll be contacting people to participate in that if it's related to your role. And all programs will be targeted for completion of commissioning, testing, and acceptance and training by November 5th. So that when we do get the keys to the building, we'll be getting the keys to a fully functional building and that we know will be functioning. So we talk about equipment, and we don't have Maria or Frank or Kathy in the room right now, but those three individuals have taken on this massive task of procuring with the clinical users and the frontline staff, the equipment. And we're getting over 25,000 pieces of equipment, new equipment for the building. And this equipment is now being delivered. So we've gone through the RFP process, we've met with the users, we've determined what's the appropriate equipment to have for each of the pieces that we're procuring, and now it's being delivered. So we actually have a materials management individual out at the new site that's tagging the equipment when it comes in, so that we can keep track of all of this new equipment that we've just purchased. And we anticipate completion of all of performance testing of the equipment by late October. And when we say performance testing, we mean that we plug it into the wall and it turns on. There's going to be a second set of performance testing, which is the clinical acceptance testing. And that's where the clinical users actually go in and make sure that that equipment is functioning to a clinical standards that's safe for patient care. And so the equipment is being reviewed and validated by the departments. And in addition to that, because we have 25,000 pieces of equipment, we need to make sure that the staff are trained appropriately on that equipment. So I see Rita in the background. Rita will be leading all of that, but we'll be working with Maria, who's been our sort of our clinical lead for the equipment procurement. And we'll be setting up vendor fairs in October. So early October, we'll have all of the vendors, or as many that makes sense to be here in the building, so that staff can come around and physically touch and see what some of that new equipment will be that you'll be working with in the new building. So when we talk about training and orientation, we really have relied on the frontline staff to be able to assist us with this because it's a massive undertaking for the upwards of 2,000 employees that have to be trained and oriented to the new building in addition to orienting volunteers. And we're looking at probably 700 to 1,100 volunteers that need to be oriented to the new building, as well as all of our physician staff colleagues. So we have identified coordinators, and some of you may be coordinators for your departments. And those coordinators are looking at different areas of focus. So we have more than 200 frontline staff that are participating as coordinators, and they will be assisting the managers to make sure that we're ready for day one. So we have move coordinators, we have equipment coordinators, department coordinators, ICT coordinators, viewpoint coordinators, and materials management coordinators. Each one with a specific role for the department or the area that they're in to be able to support the managers so that the managers can do the managing that needs to be done, and the frontline staff can be participating and leading. They can be super-users on the equipment once we get the equipment here and be trained on it. There are resident experts so that they'll know the new facility as well as the managers and maybe as well as us, hopefully. But they'll be fully prepared to support the staff that haven't had as much opportunity to be in the building as some of us have. So we have two, we had two training sessions to help the coordinators understand what their roles were and what resources would be available to them. And we also have identified that we need to provide that material to them on an ongoing basis so that they can pull back and read it and review it if they need to. So we've uploaded things onto SourceNet for a training and orientation site that is accessible to all staff. So not only to the coordinators, who will be ultimately sort of the focus and the lead for that, but any staff member that wants to know, okay, on my unit, what's going on? Who can I connect with that knows something about my unit? Well, there's always your manager, but there's also these coordinator leads that can assist as well. We always, throughout the process, have talked about training and orientation together, and we're really trying to focus on those as two separate things. Training is really about the new equipment, and that will begin in the fall with our vendor fair that we're going to provide some of that equipment onsite so people can get, start to get used to it. And we'll be able to have the vendors here to provide training for new equipment and technical support. They'll be onsite for the weeks leading up to and after we move into the new building. And I look to Jay at the back because the OR is one of those areas that has a lot of brand-new equipment with a lot of technology and a lot of changes. So those vendors will be onsite from probably four weeks before we move until four weeks after we move to be able to support staff and physicians as they move and they start to function in their new OR environment. So programs are developing the training that's required for the new processes and patient flows in their department, so that's another big piece. And I look to the inpatient managers that are in the room because that's one of our areas that is changing significantly with, instead of one central nursing station or care station, we have four decentralized care stations. So four different pods that the nursing staff and the allied health staff will be functioning out of is going to make life a little bit different than what we're used to. So we need to map out and do some training with staff around what's that going to look like in the new building. So those are sort of the clinical, and, oh, sorry, that's a picture of one of the care stations in the new building. One of our larger care stations, actually. And each care station will support a certain number of patients. So each of our inpatient units is 38 beds, so each of the pods or nursing stations will support either eight or 10 patients on the unit. And the nurses and RPMs and allied health staff will work out of those care stations to be able to support those patients. The idea being we get our clinical staff as close to our patients as possible so that they can provide easy access to care. In addition, there's going to be a lot of other processes and workflows that need to be worked through in all departments, not just the clinical departments, because certainly environmental services, you've got a much larger floor plan to be working with than you've had in the past. Portering is a whole new world for portering because they're going to be traveling for, within a million square feet of a building rather than what we're currently doing. So there's a lot of processes and workflows that have to be mapped out so that people understand when they get there, what's my new world going to look like and how am I going to function in that world? So orientation, where we've tried to divide it off to make sure that people understand the sort of differences, training is the equipment and the workflow and the processes that you have to know to be able to function in your environment. Orientation is targeted at all staff, physicians and volunteers. And this is to orientate you to the building so that you know how to get from main entrance to your department, so that you can go from the emergency department to ICU with a patient if you had to. So it depends on the area that you're going to be working in, how much orientation will be required. We will be doing probably about four hours of orientation for every staff member, and that's sort of a general orientation to the building and to any new processes or new base building pieces that will change life for you in the new building. Orientation has already, and department space has already started with the program tours of the site. And online orientation maps are being developed that will be accessible to all staff in the fall. And this is what Gloria was referring to earlier as our viewpoint or software system that we're utilizing that allows us to actually map out paths so you can time how long it'll take you to get from emerge to diagnostic imaging, or from emerge to ICU, or from the day surgery into the OR. So there's always, this is always going to be accessible to staff to pull up, to look at, to really try and make everyone comfortable with the floor plans in the building as best we can in a three-dimensional environment until we can get staff fully into the hospital and working in that environment. On-site orientation will begin at the end of 2012 and will continue to opening day. And as I say that, I get a little nervous because the time is marching along and we're getting closer and closer to the date when we will actually be in there, full-time, getting used to the building and mapping workflow and doing mock patient scenarios so that we can really understand what the impact of this change in building is going to have on us. This picture here is actually depicting what the wayfinding information will look like. This is something that would be outside of the elevator. The blue spot there is indicating what floor you're on. Those are the programs that are on that floor, and each of these will be available at every elevator as in addition to other wayfinding signage that's throughout the building that really has been targeted as targeted at the general population. So it's information that should be accessible and understandable by our patients and their family members as well as staff. So it's not more of the clinical jargon, it's the laypeople term, terminologies for areas that they would want to go to. And access opportunities, Gloria has spoken to this, and we continue to have increased access for program tours. We've involved over 1,200 participants to date. Our 2P events that Rachel and her team, Claudia and Amara, that lead that, we've had 15 events with over 300 participants, and they've had access to the building. So this has been a phenomenal opportunity for our staff to be able to get into the building and start working in their environment, walking through the space, determining what makes sense as far as how are we going to bring a patient from the waiting room into that exam room in the back? What's the best flow? How are we going to walk that patient through? So we've been doing that and bringing the 2P participants in as best we can for each of those, each of those events. Donor tours, like Gloria already mentioned, one Saturday per month, we're bringing in our donors. And then post substantial completion programs will have access to perform mock patient flows, simulation. We need to begin stocking the hospital so that we have all of our materials management coordinators out there stocking things. I'm looking, I see Jackie in the back. And MDR is going to need some serious stocking to get ready to support the OR when we go in. Orientation, like we talked about, all staff, physicians and volunteers. And then open houses for the community to tour the hospital before it opens because we don't want every person in the community to arrive on opening day because they're curious about what the new hospital looks like. As we begin to bring people through and, you know, you're taking a look at the actual areas, there's a lot of new staff that are coming through. There's people who perhaps haven't participated as much throughout the development of the design. And it's really important that particularly directors or anyone who's leading tours and people through the facility go back to where we started.
people through the facility, go back to where we started and acknowledge the incredible work that people did in making the decisions on what was designed and what was ultimately built. And so, we were guided by our project-specific output specifications, which were developed back in, you know, 2005, 2006. And there was a tremendous amount of effort and energy in terms of looking at best practice. Our architectural team came from Australia and they are specialists in building only hospitals. So, they brought a lot of evidence and a lot of information with them that helped us define how we were going to put our spaces together. And even at that time, it's really important to remember that you did not have a open card, like a carte blanche, to do whatever you wanted to do, however you wanted to do it. There was still ministry guidelines, you're still looking at efficiencies, you're still looking at limitations in terms of size and cost and efficiency. And so, it's really important to be, in my opinion, respectful of that when you come through. I find it very difficult to have someone who wasn't part of that process come through and criticize, short of any other, any other word. It's very important to bring forward your recommendations if you have ideas or suggestions, but it's also important to find out why things were done the way they were done. There's usually a very good answer and a very good reason as to why you see what you see in there. And we're happy to share that information with you, get the background, get the information, and then we'll form our opinions together and make sure that we make the absolute best of this going forward. But I really do want to acknowledge and be respectful of the tremendous work and effort that was put into this at the very beginning, as we began the process. There was a lot of staff involved and they put a lot of energy into this and a lot of expertise into it. So, Sunday, March 24th, 2013, is the patient move day. And this was the group that actually showed up on a Friday morning before a long weekend. So, obviously, there was a lot of interest in this and we had a full house going in, tremendous energy in the room. Healthcare Relocations, HCR, are our consultants who were going to help us in doing that move. They have done, in the last few years, I don't know, 300, 400 hospital moves across North America. And so, they truly are experts at doing this and they're lending that expertise to us. And they're very complimentary so far in terms of the interactions that they've had with the staff from the NHS. They find them to be very engaged and committed to making this successful as we move forward. So, obviously, the principles in this move are patient safety. The focus is on the patient that move day. We want to make sure that we minimize disruption to service and downtime on service, and we want to make sure that it's a good experience, not only for the patients, but for the staff as well. So, the move plan, the picture on the other, on the side there is actually, I think that was Sarnia's team, and they developed T-shirts because there's a whole bunch of people involved in different roles at the sending site and at the receiving site. And that patient move happens in one day. So, we begin, I think, 7 o'clock in the morning. I think the kickoff is at some ungodly hour, like 5:00 or something like that. So, I think we're going to bend the rules and we're going to provide coffee on that day. So, the move starts and then it goes in a very well-choreographed, sequenced order, not only from the St. Catharines General to the new site, but we're also bringing patients and staff from the Greater Niagara General and from the Wellens site as well in mental health, pediatrics and maternal child. So, we want that all to happen in that one day and make sure that we are up and running right afterwards. And this is actually a picture of what people have scavenged from their existing departments and are prepared to throw out because we only want to move what is essential to move. I think it's great, though. We're going to do two more of those clean sweeps and the idea is to move as much as you can out. I cannot emphasize enough, we did a tiny move from our trailers into that new space and it takes a tremendous amount of time. It's not only a physical thing, and silly as this sounds, it's an emotional thing because you start going through documents and you start going through things that have, you know, 10-year history for me. Some of you, it'll be 20-year history or, you know, five-year history or whatever the case might want to ask how many years. And so, you need to give yourself the time to respect that and to take a look at things and to purge and to let them go. So, in terms of information, we have, you know, a really active website that you can go on. It'll provide you with all the background on operational readiness. We'll be posting everything on there in terms of, you know, move day and all of the information that's going to be required. It's got great videos. We have clinical teams that take our media partners through and they actually film areas as they're complete and talk about the patient experience, and those get posted on there as well. And so, and if you have other ideas for what you'd like to see, you know, shared or posted on there, let us know and we're happy to do that.